Okay, we'll go ahead and call the committee of the whole meeting to order. It is 7:30 on Tuesday, March 20th. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Brusato?
Here.
Etac?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chancet?
Wolf?
Here.
Silvani?
Present.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Stewart?
Here.
Seron? And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we have a form. Next item is items removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything, Laura?
No.
No? Okay. Item three matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on then to item number four, which is the wastewater treatment facility monthly update. Alderman, Wolf, you gonna start us out with that, or?
Sure. I think you're ready to go, but...
Yeah. Should I just go right now?
Go right ahead.
Okay, all right, yeah, thank you. So, here is the monthly update for what we've been working on down at the wastewater treatment plant. Some of the highlights include ongoing work in the main building, that building up north, where the concrete and masonry walls are going up past the first level at this point, and we're starting to get into elevated slab concrete here in the next couple of weeks. That's just the concrete level for the second floor. The main building plumbing and electrical roughens are going in with the concrete floors and walls. In the chlorine building, which is the building that we're rehabbing the disinfection system for excess flow, we've got electrical ongoing, but it's about 95% complete. The process systems, essentially storing sodium hypochlorite, which is pretty close to bleach. All four tanks are in place and installed and piped, and the chemical feed system is also in place. For the digester operations building, we'll see pictures coming up, but the excavation has begun. We're getting into pretty deep excavation, so there's ongoing, I won't say issues, but the excavation is large and in a little bit of conflict with access, so we're going back and forth and working with the city on making sure that they can keep their operations going, but the site is expanding and it's getting tight. There's about to be a lot of activity on the site once that building starts going up. Also, minor note, but FRP grading was installed at the chemical phosphorus removal structure. Update on cost. To date, we spent on engineering and construction just under $11 million. Estimated progress at this point is 51%, based on the contractor's latest construction The last change order was approved to bring us up to this $272,586 number. We're working through an emergency repair. CMR 27 is coming up, so I just wanted to give you a snapshot of what that's gonna be. The scope of work is replacement of three mixed liquor slide gates. They're used for isolating the final clarifiers of the plant. They're a critical piece of infrastructure that we need in order to shut down portions of the plant to do the work that we had in scope. We didn't know that they didn't work, but they all don't work. So, we found this out, it's a little concerning, but we've worked with the city staff to find a solution, and with the contractor to make sure that he knows exactly what he needs to do. So, right now, it's a CMR, but it's going to be on a time and material basis, so the hope is that this is the worst-case scenario number, and we're gonna work to bring that down. So, that'll bring us into a $339,000 for change orders for the project, which is about 1.3%. So, again, if you have any questions about that, please feel free to interrupt me.
Did they give you an estimate on that?
They did.
They did, and they gave you the estimate, I thought, was it September or November?
They gave us the estimate about two weeks ago, or a week ago, I wanna say. It was... We reviewed it with the contractor. It's fairly detailed, and I have it here.
Right.
So, I can bring it up on the screen if you'd like. But we have known about the problem for several months.
It's about September.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's been ongoing, just going through the motions.
I guess my question to you, Jerry, is just, I went through this, and I saw that, I thought it was in November when you got an estimate, and they said it was 45 days to make a decision, and they can hold, that they would hold their price for 45 days. So, I'm assuming they're still holding their price.
They will hold their price, yes. Yeah, if the date was on there is September, that was a typo.
Do we know how long those gates were out, those slide gates, they're out of service?
I don't know when they became out of service. It wasn't something that we were planning to replace as part of this phase. It was going to go into that section of the structure in the next phase, but since it indirectly affects some of the other work, that's what brought it up. We found it when we did the first initial plant shutdown to do some of the work. As part of that process, it's coordinated effort with all the members of city staff. They isolate flow through the plant and send it all through the chlorine contact tank, so we have to do it at low-flow scenarios, and then we have to pump down a bunch of tanks in order to get the levels down below, so where we can perform the work during that. It was found that these gates were inoperable.
So, all right, well, it sounds like it's a maintenance issue, you know, normal wear and tear, and just time to replace them, because things do wear out and rust up when they're under those kinds of harsh conditions.
Yes.
Can I just make one comment, Mike?
Yeah, sure thing, Byron.
These things would've probably been in this year's budget to replace.
Right, yeah.
It had nothing to do with the construction, or whatever, they're just pitted and...
Right, no, and I agree, I mean, things get beat up.
Gets beat up, yeah.
Right, and so, it's, so we're just putting it in the construction budget, though, just to...
Basically, yeah.
This is not a bad...
We have, we have all the heavy equipment there, nobody has to, you know...
Get it done now.
Yeah, just get it done now.
So, going back to that real quick, then, given that, if you were gonna have that in the budget this year, but yet, because it's part of this project, we can, we can add that as part of these costs, and that's where you were saying, that Phase Two, they would've been replaced anyway, so that's, obviously, that'll come out of Phase Two, these will be good for, as we go forward?
Yes.
Thanks, Byron.
Anything else? No, okay. Schedule update, again, I know it's difficult to read, but this is the contractor's latest. He actually sent this in a couple of days ago. It shows that he's actually fallen a little bit further behind, even though we've talked about summer hours, and now he's gonna be able to work longer hours. He's talked about working, you know, tens during the week, he's talked about working weekends. He's only worked one weekend so far, but he has worked longer hours last week, and now that lights out for longer, he's gonna be able to do that more effectively.
Looks like the springtime, there's a lot of critical activities happening.
Yes, and that's part of why there's going to be a lot of people on site, working both at the north end and the south end.
Jerry, is part of the problem labor? Just isn't enough labor?
The problem was really temperature. The cold and the snow sort of slow you down, so also the shorter hours of light. I mean, they can work seven to nine, I believe, so if they wanted to, they could, they just haven't been. So, I don't know that it necessarily has everything to do with labor. Staffing is sort of the contractor's prerogative of a means and methods, but we have talked to him about the requirement that he's going to have to beef up staff no matter what he wants to do.
Do you feel comfortable that, given, as the season turns here and we get more light, that they'll be able to catch up, given?
Yes, I do. Okay. Any more questions on schedule? Okay. Let's see. Okay, project photos, fun stuff. This is February 3rd, about a month ago, and as you can see, going into just last Friday, you'll see the white enclosure here. This is part of what the contractor's been doing for winter protection of his construction. And if you see the difference between this picture and this picture, he's moved around the right-hand corner of the building quite a bit with his masonry walls. Another thing is, we've got all these concrete slabs poured in the process area here, so in the next couple of weeks, he's going to start scaffolding and placing forms for the elevated slabs in these areas.
Jerry, was all the winter protection and conditions, was all that part of the contract? That's not a change order?
That's not a change order. He was going to go through a winter, no matter what he did, with concrete and masonry, so there is no change order for that.
So, that should've been kind of back to the schedule. That should've been part of the schedule, too, that you know that you're gonna have, in late winter, early spring, you're gonna have rains, you're gonna have snow, you're gonna have cold, and winter slows construction down considerably, but that should've been kind of built into their schedule.
Yes, I agree.
Good story.
This is a perspective facing east toward the river there, just to show you another perspective on the walls. So, that's the main building. Here is the digesters. Again, through February 3rd, there wasn't a ton of activity, they were just starting to excavate here, right near the south end of the digesters. This is the area now. I know it's a little faded white, but you can see the excavation's gone down about 12 feet. The cover for the first of the digesters to be rehabilitated is being erected here, and then it'll be lifted and dropped into place. So, this is all about quarter to a half-inch-thick steel plate being bolted together and welded. And that's the update. Open the floor to questions.
I'm gonna say, I don't, I hope you don't think I'm being negative, because I, you know, I've been by a few times, and I think they're doing a fine job. It's a big project, and I think they're doing a good job, so, and I think they can make up the time on the schedule, so I have, I really don't have any concerns. I think you guys are doing a fine job overseeing it, so I think we're in good hands and things will move along.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to item five, wastewater treatment plant, replacement of diversion structure slide gates. I think we just really...
Can we just kind of cover that?
Included that in there, yeah.
Included it together.
Noted. All right.
Anybody have any more questions on that? All right, item number six, which is discussion on the liquidated damages assessed to RNOW for late delivery over 2017, self-contained leaf collection trailer memo from Scott Haynes. Alderman, Wolf?
Thank you. Scott makes his way up here. This is a trailer that we ordered, and has it not been delivered, or was it just delivered late?
It was delivered in the end of January.
Okay. I'll let you go ahead.
Okay. We, obviously, we ordered this machine after bidding it out in May of last year, and just to try to get it bid out in such a way that we could get the machine in time for leaf season, and the dates in the contract were such that 110 build days were kind of what we've done with the similar machine before. With this, this particular machine was kind of designed and similar to the ones we've built in the past. There were some, some things that, after getting a notice proceed and moving forward, that contractor or a vendor started to bring to my attention, and, you know, I kept on saying, completion date, completion date, and leaf season, and he, they just kind of ended up struggling a little bit with the manufacturer, trying to, you know, try to hit that date, and then it went beyond the date, and we were in contact, kind of, at least email or phone call at least once a week or so, all the way through the process. It was just an unfortunate, you know, situation, and Kevin's here from RNOW, if he has something also he would like to say, but as we kind of went through the process, I had Kevin look at our language, and he, he kind of, you know, gives his guidance in there on my memo and what we should do. Certainly, RNOW has also made an offer to, of a lesser amount than the total liquidated damages. Obviously, the liquidated damages is really an item, I think, we come to terms with in our contracts to try to be an incentive to get a, get the machine or get the contract done, whatever the case may be, not necessarily be a way to get a machine for half-price, or get a project done for half-price. So, in this, in this regard, it does seem, you know, a bit overkill, if you will, but it still is the language that was in the contract and the guidance that Kevin Adrenel has offered. But to get back to the point, I think the amount that was kind of suggested by RNOW is a, in lieu of the contract, liquidated damages of $10,000, and my opinion fell a little short, because we end up, obviously, didn't have the machine, we had to use our older machine, and we did have a breakdown with that machine during the season. We had to use parts on our, in our inventory, which we can't use for now another machine. So, there's kind of ramifications that, the cause and effect that went into it. So, we now have the machine, you know, so it's, we need to settle this situation here. So, my recommendation by Memo was to, to go with their $10,000 and then add an additional five in liquidated damages for the parts and labor and materials basically that we had to endure for, with our existing machine. Do you have any questions on...
Anybody have any questions? Dave?
Scott, I guess my question is, when you went out for bid on this machine, or on a machine, it was in the bid documents of 110-day turnaround?
Yes.
So, do you feel as though, had that stipulation not been in there of 110 days, and maybe it was in there for 200 days, that maybe you would've gotten other vendors, or a better price from other vendors, that maybe this kind of creates unfair advantage if we forgive this liquidated damages where we could've gotten another vendor, or a better price from another vendor, had we not put that in there?
Well, it's hard to predict what other vendors would've been able to provide. Certainly, they produced, we did get two bids from another vendor, two different engines. That's why the two bids, because the engines, at that time, were the big deal. That was a lot of the fear of the build days, being able to get those engines in inventory, and then also the type of engines they were. I think there was a John Deere in one and a Kubota another for, from the other vendor. I would be speculating to think that they could make the date, or they couldn't make the date. To your point, it could be seen as an unfair advantage to accept the lower liquidated damages, but on the other side, I think, as Kevin kind of indicates, I think if we were to, like, maybe go to, it would go to litigation if we didn't accept this, and it might be a harder number to achieve.
Oh, okay. As I read through the letter, and RNOW says, you know, that some of the responsibility is, rests with them, and some rests with Dingmar, but a portion of it lies with the manufacturer. Why would we not get any liquidated damages from the actual manufacturer?
Because our contract is with the vendor, just like, you know, any dealer, like, other equipment that we buy, that they have other manufacturers that they, they use to build equipment. That's their contract between them as the vendor and the manufacturer. So, it's, I wouldn't 100% read into the, the RNOW, you know, letter, because I think there's a responsibility that they may have between vendor and manufacturer that didn't equal our, our contract language with city and vendor.
Okay.
Mike?
You know, I understand Dave's point, what it is speculation, and I think Dave is probably, may have been in that situation before with what he does, and I know I have. And so, I would agree with you, Scott. I don't think the residents of Potavia, the citizens of Potavia, are looking to get something for half-price.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and it's, it's more of an incentive clause, and you can use it as a penal clause, but I think, in all fairness, I mean, they offered that up, I would, I would accept that, as long as they also, for whatever cost, we've incurred, that they would meet those costs also.
Right.
That's how I would see it also, so I would agree with you.
Well, certainly, I don't think, when you set the price of a liquidated damage for this type of equipment, the $300 is not a kind of an unfair number, but with the amount that it went to, starts to become, you know, a big number, and I guess that's why we're here.
Right.
It is, is, I, just recommending what I'm recommending, certainly, you can, you can choose to, to go harder or lighter, depending on what your opinion is. I will need to work with this vendor for future maintenance, and not necessarily daily maintenance or anything like that, but future parts, and I have a relationship that I need things on a timely basis, and I really don't need to, you know, have something like this change that situation either.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I would think, you know, the vendor is here, and hopefully, he sees we're looking to be fair also, that when it comes time to servicing his equipment, that he would be right on the spot with us.
Yeah.
And give us some good treatment, so...
Does he need another question?
I did. I guess, as I look at this, the liquid damage, liquidated damages are one thing, but truly, after the middle of November, we weren't going to use it anyway. So, it's not like we had, there's not an opportunity cost that was lost there, because it would've just sat in storage for the months of December and January. So, I guess when I look at it that way, it makes sense that we would be negotiating on the liquidated damages.
It's kind of where I, it wasn't like I was going through an entire construction season without a...
Exactly.
A piece of equipment. I went through the leaf season, and then it gets put away, and I...
And you didn't have to store it.
Hmm?
And you didn't have to store it.
Not till January, night, 29th.
Scott?
Just quick, I guess, two things. One, I, my business, I work with different vendors, and I'm responsible for stuff that happens, period, and so, so I understand that, and it does, and there's ongoing relationships that, you know, you want, you have to have and all that. What it comes down to for me is, they're making a concession, obviously, we think that, you know, the liquidated damages are probably a bit too steep. Are you satisfied with what they're offering, plus the, you know, the repair costs for what we had on hand?
I would say, personally, I'd find it really guilty to pay $36,000 less for a machine.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I think that I feel is a little extreme, and I think we're, what I've proposed is a, kind of a median of that.
You know, I, I agree with you, Scott, but the idea of liquidated damages, particularly when they're of the dollar amount that we're talking about, are there for a reason, to make sure you get that piece of equipment when you want it. And it's, it's not even like it was just a few days late, that we'd be saying, hey, you know, it was a few days late, no big deal. It was 100 days late. There was no incentive, there was no, it appears as though there was no desire to meet the obligation.
Right.
And that's disturbing, but hearing what you're saying, I agree with you, you know, you need to be able to call them up and say, hey, I got a problem, and have them answer the phone, so we need to work together.
Yeah, I, we're saying that, oh, it's getting too high when it gets to the 36 and the 100 and some days. How did it get to that point? Are we not talking after a month, going, what's going on? Do we want to cap this right now? Is there anything that we need to start thinking about before it gets to the, you know, you've eaten the whole dinner, and, oh my God, now here's the bill stage, because the...
Well, you know, to point over here, it just, once you get through leaf season, it's like, I don't necessarily, the need for the machine, and I'm on the last week or two of the leaf season, it's kind of, all of a sudden, it becomes pointless that the new machine would even show up at that particular point, you know, it's... Believe me, I was in contact with, with them continually through the process, going, we need the machine, we need the machine, we need the machine, and I'm sure Kevin can can echo that, and his struggles with the vendor, and it just, there was really, I mean, other than my reaching out to them and explaining the process, explaining the liquidated damages and, and that kind of thing, through the, through the length of time, it, I, my hands were tied.
Wait.
Yes, Scott, on the bid prices, if it would've been bid for 220 days turnaround, would any of these prices have been cheaper?
It's hard to say that. I would venture to say that it might've been, but it's 110 days to build a machine, in theory, when you have a lot of plug-and-play parts, you know, it shouldn't be an issue. With, with this particular unit, I don't think our machine was alone in the, in the world of their manufacturing. I think they had a problem, they went to a different valving, electronic wireless valving system that ended up not functioning properly, and then having to change in, in the process. So, it just, now you have to go find a new vendor for those parts, and so, they, basically, in a couple of years' time, they changed that valving system from what they had in our machine we bought a couple of years ago, to what they were planning to put on this machine. And that is what I was told through the process, was the biggest part of the delay, was that electronic wireless system.
Which, in that regard, you kind of appreciate the fact that you didn't get a machine that was gonna be delivered with a problem.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe to answer Marty's question also, is that, is, and I've been in the situation, we order eight air handling units for a project to put up on the roof of a, of a building, and they're going to a major manufacturer, the subcontractor. Major manufacturer, it's, you know, international company, when we're ready to give it to you. And, and, you know, two emails a day, three or four phone calls a day, and as all the people can say is, I don't have the equipment. I can't get it to you till they ship it. And, and your hands are just tied, there's nothing you can do, no matter what you've agreed to.
Mm-hmm.
When the larger manufacturer says, we're too busy, we can't do it, unless you just end up in litigation with them, and that's senseless, so I get what, what RNOW is coming against.
Yeah, and I've done contracts where, you know, liquidated damages are, you know, on a, on a construction project or such, that you have build dates, and you're, you're fighting the weather, you're fighting this, you're fighting that, and those make, that makes a lot of sense. There's some, there are some issues with those, because you're, you're fighting the end of the construction season, and you need to get it done. This is a little different circumstance, because it is a machine that, once you get to a certain point, it's gonna sit, and it's hard to prove a, as Kevin put in there in his guidance, it, it's hard to prove a loss of, of what we actually physically lost by not having that machine once we got through the leaf season. That's, I guess that's why I would suggest what I've recommended.
Have we purchased machines from them before, from this vendor?
Yes.
Okay, so they're usually a typical bidder and builder of the equipment...
Yeah.
On a continual basis? Because that was the other thing, I mean, I don't want to go through this and destroy a relationship that we're gonna have to try to...
No, we have a machine that's two years old from them, that we've been happy with.
And build time and everything was normal on that?
Yeah.
No problems?
Absolutely.
So, are you looking for us to just approve the $10,000 plus $5,000?
That's my recommendation.
There a motion to be made?
But I have Kevin who might want to say something, too, and just...
I'd like to hear a response from him.
Absolutely.
And then we'll make a decision.
Thank you, everyone. First of all, I want to apologize for, we're taking up everybody's valuable time working through this process, and I do appreciate everybody's willingness to have an open discussion on things. As a representative from the dealership, representing the manufacturer, unfortunately, there were some supplier issues on the manufacturer level that led to these delays, so it was not anything intentional, just kind of how things played out, and unfortunately, we all kind of got caught up in this. I've been asked to present a counterproposal to what Scott has presented. We've already kind of agreed to the $10,000 in the liquidated damages. The counterproposal, I guess, is on the $5,000 for the repairs that went into the machine to keep it running for the season. Counterproposal being to split those, that $5,000, and in return, the manufacturer will provide an additional years' worth of warranty on the machine, for a full two years of warranty. So, I don't know if that's something that could be agreeable, I don't know how, what's... I don't know how, what Scott feels about that.
What is the value of that, two years?
Can't really put a value on it at this point. Something that the manufacturer may be able to put a value on, they have agreed to put that in writing as well, so.
What do you think Scott?
Well, one, one impeller blade is about 3,500 bucks, one, you know, and, and those things add up. It, it's a wash to me as far as what we would end up, what it would end up being. It, it's a gamble on their side more than it's a gamble on our, because of the, the maintenance. I mean, it's, it's a machine that goes 100 miles an hour for eight weeks and then it sits. And then, uh, then again, it goes that way for eight weeks again and then, and then it sits, so.
Do we purchase a warranty when we buy the units?
Yes.
Or does it just come with a factory warranty?
I, I'll put in there in my contract, a year warranty.
Okay, and what does that cost us for a year, do you know?
That's just embedded into the cost.
Oh, it's embedded in the cost of the unit, okay.
I say go with the warranty.
I'd, I'd be fine with the warranty.
So it'll be $10,000 plus 2,500.
And the one-year warranty.
And a one-year warranty.
The one-year warranty in writing.
In writing, yeah, well, that's, that's-
Well, we have one that came with the contract and then an additional year.
But basically it's the $10,000 liquidated damages plus $2,500.
Right, for parts, for whatever cost incurred, splitting that cost.
Right.
And then a one additional year warranty for a total of two.
Correct.
So basically that brings, it took the, uh, total of the machine to 54,501 and 95 cents.
We haven't paid him anything yet?
I'm sorry?
Have we paid him anything yet?
I haven't paid anything yet.
So, so a motion would be, do we pay him the 54,000 or do we say the motion, we accept the $10,000? Uh, it can go either way, right? It doesn't matter?
Basically accept the 12,500 dollars in liquidated damages to bring the price down to 54,551.95.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by O'Brien, second by Stark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed? None? Okay, motion carries. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then item number seven, resolution 18 dash 36 dash R, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Batavia and the county of Kane for household hazardous waste collection services and a rider to the office offer to contract RFP 20 dash 017 with U.S. Ecology. Again, memo from Scott Haines, Alman Wolf. I'm trying to find it, hold on one second. Hold on one second.
Okay, this is, uh, considering our options for hazardous waste program for citizens, determine that working with Kane County through the intergovernmental agreement would be the best way for us to get this started. Um, Scott, you want to go through specifics on it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. Um, I'm kind of excited to, to bring this one to, to the committee. Um, it's been something we kind of thought about and tried to figure out how we could best do this and, and to run our own independent program, to adding it to our, uh, RFP for waste services. Um, I, I think just to get something rolling and, and moving forward, we're, uh, you know, looking to do the intergovernmental agreement with Kane County, um, to kind of get the, the ball rolling, so to speak. We, we do collect a fee currently and we, uh, we have some funds to move forward and move forward right away. Um, the, based on, depending on, on how we would move forward tonight and, and council going forward, um, we might be able to even get the pro, program started as early as June 1st. Um, just, we just, from here, the county needs to do their agreement approvals and such. But kind of give the, the bullet points of the program, it is an at-your-home kind of service that we would end up being able to service about 18 to 24, 25 homes a month. And they, they would basically just call a, uh, 800 number and, uh, to get a, a Batavia resident would call them and they would basically be able to get signed up for the collection. Eventually that list would make its way to me to make sure that they are truly Batavia residents and, and once that's, uh, finished up, they would get a mailing. It would include a list of accepted items and not accepted items, the bag that it would go in and, uh, details on the date of collection and where to put it. Those items are going to be like aerosol cans, unused, they're, um, still got product in them, pesticides, cleaning chemicals, things that, um, many of us might use half of, put on a shelf in the garage and it sits there for about six, eight years. The intent is to get away from some of the heavier weight items that are disposable and recyclable here in town, um, like waste oil. There's a, a few different, uh, um, companies in town, like Stan's one of them and I think Parks is another that'll accept waste oil, so we want to kind of keep that. Not many people are changing their own oil at home, so it's, it, that's not as much as it used to be. Auto batteries, we, those same places still accept auto batteries. So again, try to keep some of those weights down so the program can be valuable for the, the real, you know, chemicals that, um, we struggle with getting rid of. So, um, oil-based paints will be accepted, latex paints wouldn't be accepted because those can be dried and, and thrown away. So this is kind of a, a little feel for the items that would be, um, part of the program. There's a pretty detailed list within the intergovernmental agreement that it gets in a little bit more of the, the finite details. Basically the bag can weigh up to 70 pounds of product and then they'll call the night before and remind residents that this is your pickup date and then you can leave it on a porch and then they'll pick it up on that scheduled date. They do estimate that there'll be a little bit less in the winter time than they would be in the summer due to, you know, whatever constraints are, are challenging them. Typically a program like this would start up in, and I think it starts up, it'd be a lot of people probably wanting to try to get rid of their product. So there'll be a backlog, you know, and they'll, they may be booking two months as, at the most and then telling people to kind of book, you know, kind of call ahead. I just, I don't know the answer to how far they'll book ahead. But we'll get a good handle on that after a couple of months after we see how the, how the, the bulk of call-ins. There'll be a kind of a limit because let's keep our, our budget kind of the status to where we can kind of keep it going all, all year long and be able to, and not inundate the vendor to where they can't handle the product. On the budget part of it, we will have to probably come back once we do get an approval, is come back for a budget amendment because this wasn't in the 2018 budget. There is money that we've, we've been getting, so, and it's there in account, but we, not, the expense is not in the 2018 budget. So we will have to bring that budget amendment forward to, to do that if approved. The typical pickup cost for residents, I mean, they don't, they won't see this cost, but it'll, it'll be what the county does for us. Um, they, the county will, at the beginning of, when we start, the, we will issue a check to the county for $35,000. Out of that $35,000, they'll keep 10% for their administrative costs. Jennifer does a lot of, uh, cross-checking and, and looking over the invoices and then she makes all the, the payments per, um, per month. But then at the, uh, basically every household gets an ad, gets a dollar amount and a description of what those materials are. And if they're, if it's a 100% recyclable collection, it'll be the $100 kind of category. If it's the more hazardous chemical that's not recyclable, then it'll be a $125 category. Out of an average month in Geneva, one of them out of the 20 is a recyclable. They typically all are on the 125 vintage, as, as you can imagine. So, um, it's about it in a nutshell.
So, you, you said that you were thinking the number was 24 houses a month?
Yeah.
Boy, that seems light to me in terms of-
Well, when you-
You have a backlog.
When you kind of factor 24 times, do the math, that 24 times 12 and, and times 125, it's already exceeds 35,000.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it. I just, I, I, I think, I think you'll fill up your, your, your run within-
You won't have to publicize it real big to start with.
Yeah, cause I, you know, I'm down in Naperville usually once, once a year in, you know, in line with the hazmat suits down there and, you know, getting rid of something. That's-
And, and I, one thing I didn't mention, I think I also have it in here, is we will try to keep residents to one pickup per year so that, you know, it's not just a, a small business or something taking advantage of it, not letting everybody else, you know, you know, try to benefit from it or, or use the program. It is a light number and, and I, Geneva's operating in it right now, um, and, and a much, you know, a little bit less number, um, to the point of like 20, $20,000 total. They did see a, a big flush in the first couple of years that they ran the program and had to shut it down after six months because it exceeded their budget. I think that is something we will have to gauge as we go and just see what, what we can tolerate, what the contractor can tolerate and, and take to what our, our budget amounts will allow.
Susan?
Um, I have several questions about this. I was reading about it earlier today and while I think it's a great program, I truly do. Um, and like Scott, my husband and I several times a year make the trek over to Naperville and get rid of all, all of the things that are on this list, aside from the fluorescent bulbs which I bring here to City Hall. But I guess, how, I don't mind driving to Naperville, so that's, that's one of the things that I look at and go, okay. So what happens to all of this stuff now for people who don't? Does it go into our waste stream?
That's, that's exactly what happens. And, and that's what, um, can cause truck fires. Um, just those chemicals mixing in the back of a truck, they can cause fires at the, um, waste transfer station. It is a, um, it's, it's a process that we, we, we should, we need to do for, for that benefit, to keep that out of the landfills and not only keep it as safe as we can on the road.
And then, and my second part would be a question, part of this question would be, what will we do in terms of public education so people realize that this program is available to them? Because as, as a resident in town, you kind of have to ferret out information as to where can I recycle all of this random stuff? So now, how will we get it out to the public and let them know that it is a limited amount of pickups so that every household in town doesn't call and expect to get a pickup in the same year? I mean-
Obviously we're dealing with 8,600, you know, basically households and, and plus or minus some there and then you got apartments that, you know, units that even exceed that. That number would, it would, would exceed my probably entire budget if we tried to service all of, all of that. So it's, it, it is a place to start. It's, it is going to be a tough number to keep suppressed to that point. Um, I, I, but I do think it's a, a, and, and again, I think it's a good starting point for us to kind of build from.
I guess, I, I look at it as, um, I, I like things to be kind of fair and equitable. And so this is very much first come, first served.
Yes.
And, um, so then I'm kind of like, well, what about the other 3,000 households? How many did you say we have in town?
Well, because we're in the RFP process with the waste services, we're about 8,600 households that we would service.
Okay, so-
In, in the refuse collection. Now, again, uh, uh, there's probably about the same that would be, that this would also serve, because I really don't think you're going to get a, um, an apartment building to, to have product, that much product that they would need to have this service. I hope they would.
I am all for recycling and we have way more recycling every week than we do trash. But it's, it's a big cost and, and I, and it's for such a small amount of people that I'm kind of like, ooh, does the, the cost benefit offset?
Well, the, the cost benefit is the waste service provider is the one who's paying for it. So it's, it's to their benefit to pay it to, for us to use it. And that's, that's kind of, it's not a, a number that's general, is coming out of our general fund dollars, it's a, an in and out money.
Explain.
The, the fee-
We're already collecting a, a fee from advanced for weight, hazardous waste services.
That's, that was my last question because when I was reading this three and four dollar part of this, I was like, what, what, where is that coming from?
It's currently three dollars.
Okay, and it's going up to four?
It's based on a per, per household basis.
Got it, thank you.
And, and what we're looking on the next RFP is to go to four dollars. And, and again, that's a, an in-out money that should be spent.
No, just a quick comment too, going to what you said about education and, and, you know, in recycling, because I, I don't think we, we do a phenomenal job of really letting people know, you know, where they can, you know, recycle their electronics.
Right.
You know, their hazardous stuff and, you know, I think hand in hand that goes with this, because this is a great program. You know, for those that aren't able to get to Naperville, this is a wonderful program to be able to have. But they should also have that option to be able to know that, hey, Saturday mornings, load it up, drive it down to Naperville.
Agreed.
And, you know, and any Saturday morning, you can go down there and do that. I think that needs to be part of that education for people to know.
And I totally agree. I, I think education is going to be the, it would be a huge, huge part of this and we certainly, we have some, some literature that Jennifer's already given us as a baseline and we'll, we'll basically be using that and, and adding some more. I, I, I can't, I don't think there's going to be enough ways to get it out. I would lean on Chris to help with, with that too.
The environmental commission might do a program.
Right, that would be a great decision.
We have, I mean, last fall, we started in, you know, going into the fall season when people are sort of garage jobs and stuff, we did. And I do pick up some rehearsed stuff and posted both on social-
Chris, Chris, are you, Chris, use the mic, will you? Because otherwise the people on TV can't hear you.
Oh, okay.
I was commenting that, um, last fall, we really started to focus on the fact that, um, people could make that trip. And we do pick up material from Kane County because there are these gaps, both between electronics recycling and hazardous waste recycling. So we've been trying to close that gap and yes, the environmental commission, uh, has shared some of that and we reshared across social media. So it is possible for us, the challenge that we can also solve to some degree might be to put an emphasis on this through our neighbors publication to reach those households that do not do social media, aren't engaged electronically and that sort of thing. So we've been making an effort to make sure that we get that information out.
I think we'll also encourage, you know, based on the, the items that we have in our, our, or our, uh, agreement here, we encourage people to work together too. Um, not just, uh, uh, one person, but maybe work with your neighbor if you only have a few items and to kind of make sure that we get the best bang for the buck, so.
Alan?
Dave?
So Scott, explain to me again, currently we're getting a three dollar fee per household from our waste management-
Correct.
-supplier or vendor. What's that fee currently used for?
Right now it's in a bank. It's in an account. We have not had a program yet to use it, utilize it.
What was the intent of that fee?
To start a program such as this.
Okay. But now, now we're going to be asking for four dollars, which they're going to be raising the rates on, or how, I mean, they got to come up with the money.
We, we haven't, that's, that's still in the plan of our, our F P to, to try to ramp it up a little bit.
I mean, I, I appreciate trying to institute this program. I think it's a great idea, but I just, you know, I've been hearing a lot from the older people lately and the young single women mothers that between electric and water and garbage and, I mean, these fees are killing them. And it just, if we do this, the garbage fees are going to reflect this so we can do this and these people maybe don't use this service ever. to reflect this so we can do this and these people maybe don't use this service ever. So it's just one more fee that gets raised and imposed. I don't know.
Well, at this point today, we, we don't even have to increase the fee that we already have in our RFP. Um, that, and we can use the three dollar fee that we have currently going forward in the next RFP and it'll, it'll just, and keep these dollar amounts the same and we can just chip away at that, uh, account that we've been collecting for the last four years.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was going to say is that, I was going to ask where it was and we've been collecting that for four or five years now, right? So there's $125,000.
Rough.
Roughly.
I don't know the specific number, but.
Yeah, so there's roughly $125,000 and we could, we could not charge anything and run it for a few years. Obviously, that's not the case. But if you're just only collecting three dollars, it's still going to take us a while to knock down that account.
I don't want to, um, jeopardize our ability to come back at a later date and increase this number, um, of what we can, what the vendor can pick up. You know, if we're, if they can max out at 22 or 24 houses today and they, they say, well, we can ramp it up to 30 or 40, I would not want to, you know, try to, in a five-year contract with our waste caller, want to try to introduce something.
Can that be something that we have in the contract to be able to escalate that at some point if we need to bump it to four, based on the funds?
Uh, there, there isn't on, on that particular, it's a set fee per year, based on households. And again, we can, we can keep that number the same as what we've, we've had, um, in our next RFP. And again, two at this, this, uh, what's in the bank account, so to speak.
So I guess, yeah, I mean, if you kept it at three and we'll just say it's roughly $25,000 a year, at the end of the next five years, it'd be a quarter million dollars we would have. So in five years, we're going to spend a quarter million dollars on this.
It's, it's about a $25,000 per year income.
So that would put us at a, over the 10 years.
Right.
We've been, that's a quarter million dollars, which would seem to be that we could still run it at three dollars and we, maybe five years down the line, we look at increasing it because then we'll have nothing left.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if we were to, again, go to, just leave it at the, the set, the three dollar rate and, and leave the, these numbers alone and that 35,000, we'll be taking 10,000 out of that account, you know, going forward.
Marty?
But at some point, it's going to operate at a deficit.
At some point, yes. At some point, like I'm saying, I think we can make it another five years at three dollars and then the next negotiation.
You see how successful our program is.
But I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to start our, our base number with the county any lower than where we're at and.
No, I, I agree to that. I mean, it, it sounds like if it's successful, we'll burn through that. If it's not, then, then we're not charging anymore.
And I think we'll, and, and again, this is kind of the way the industry is. I think once you start up something like this, you get killed, you know, the first couple of years. And then eventually it, it will settle down to a more normal, consistent basis.
Marty?
Yeah, I think my concern is like Dave's because somebody's going to go, all right, well, how am I going to benefit from this? And if they can only do max 25 times about 300 stops per year, that works out to, and only one time that you can do this per year, it's going to take 28 years for every household to even get the lottery that your stuff is going to go. So I don't think that even, and it's such a small number, like to Susan's point, that it's not really doing anything for, you're getting 300 homes out of 8,000 on a yearly basis that that hazardous material is going to go. 300 out of that much and you know you're not going to get it this year and you're probably not going to get it the next year. And it's going to create this mindset of, we're paying for something that I will never use and I'm just going to get rid of my stuff no matter what.
That's a very possible way to look at it. I mean, I, I, that fee that it's paid to us is a, a fee that's generated by 8,600 homes paying incrementally with their sticker cost or with their, or their contract purchase or with their, uh, cart cost. I mean, there's, it's not a, um, it's not a gift, if you will, from the vendor. It's, it's just a, a number that comes from them that's distributed all between all, you know, all households.
And that's what I think to Dave's point, I think with so many fees that have been coming on, everybody wants to know that I at least stand a fighting chance of being able to use it. And if you might not get it for 28 years, that kind of.
Yeah, if your water bill, if your water bill goes up, it goes up because you use the water.
Absolutely. Yeah. Or that you're using the trash or that you're.
Right.
That you should stand a much better chance of being able to use those fees.
One of the things that I would point out though, is that taking 300 homes of these types of chemicals out of the system is a benefit to all of the citizens.
Right. And to Mark's point.
Scott?
To Mark's point is, you know, we're not going to be raising the fees on anybody. And so until maybe five years.
I, I have one question before we go any further. If we were to do one or two times a year, a pickup, say like Naperville does, what would it cost? Or do you have any idea what it would cost for us to do that? If we were to say.
I, I have no.
A week of the garage sale or, you know, twice a year, if we spent 20 grand on that and open it up to everybody for a year or two, out of that money that's there, to be able to like get a head start onto this. You know, I mean, I see every time I go to a garage sale or every time we're out to the yearly garage sale, you see the stacks and stacks and stacks of stuff in the corners of somebody's garage, especially the older houses and stuff that's been there for three or four generations of owners that just sits in the corner of the garage. And I think that's the scariest thing to me, is to see the bottle that's in the corner that's black and says DDT on it. You know, it's been there forever.
I think that'd be a very good thing to do, but I think we'd end up with a mountain full of stuff that would, we'd be sitting there looking at, what are we going to do with this? And how much is this going to cost us to get rid of now?
Well, I think, I think at that point, Dave, is what I've seen in the ones that I've been to, they have a trailer there, they have a semi there. And when they get to the end of that trailer and it's full or the end of that semi, they stop. And then at that point, you have to turn to people. And I think people understand that when they see it physically that there's no more room in the trailer, they just can't leave stuff there.
But at least it gives everybody a fight.
Right. It gives everybody a chance to go in there and do that. I mean, I just would wonder what that cost would be. Would it make sense since we do have this bank account to work with, before we start trying to do this just on a regular basis to take the turnover as somebody sells a house or buys a house or whatever the, you know, whatever makes you want to clean out the garage and get rid of the stuff? I think that, to me, that's a way to maybe take that giant jump away from everything as if we were to do one or two.
I think you'd find the cost is going to be so incredible that, I mean, it's, I mean, the budget that Naperville has has been cut drastically.
Okay.
Already. I mean, I, I just, I just don't know that, you know, that's even possible.
Okay. Cause I would just like to wonder, I, I guess I'd like to explore that possibility to see what that cost would be. I mean, if you come back and you say it's $100,000 for a weekend pickup like that, okay, that doesn't make sense to me.
I'm going to, I'm going to say you're probably underestimating. Yeah. I can exceed that part.
Going to Alan's point too, is, and I was curious, because I know a lot of that cost is driving around and the logistics of it. And if you can take, if you can take that out, I mean, that, there is cost savings there. And so I would be very curious to know if there is some way to restructure that so that whether it's twice a year or whatever it might be, that, you know, if it's a limited, limited availability, that people, they get their bag, however, they, they come down, they go wherever they order it. And then they can come down and they can, you know, they can bring it first come, first served, whether it's the first of March and first of, of October or whatever it might be. Um, and just to see what kind of cost that looks like, because you're taking a lot of the logistics out of it.
You are, but i- is that necessarily the largest cost? I'm not sure if driving around is the cost or the, where it ends up after you drop it off. Maybe the, not, not the sheer volume of stuff, but that you can't just, they're not just tossing it in a garbage can after you bring it in. They have to dispose of it in such a way that it is contained and cannot get into the water supply. I think that might be where the lion's share is the cost.
It would be the same if I'm bringing you my blue bag and you have a big pile of blue bags with all the same requirements that if they picked it up in front of my house that met. So those exact same things, but now I'm bringing you my blue bag, field blue bag and putting it somewhere. There's a lot more volume granted, but they can just pick it up with one truck versus driving around town and making 20 stops.
And the truck isn't. So if I was to receive 20 things that cost me $20 to dispose of, I can pick up 400 for the same amount, but I'm still going to have to pay that $20. So it's a difference of $440,000.
Got it, got it, got it.
I, I respect, I respect, thank you. I respect the cost of, you know, what that company has to do to dispose it, you know, certainly. And, and I definitely like the idea of the program of, you know, at least being a little bit more environmentally conscious of some of these things that we don't want to just dump into a landfill and, and have it cause problems later. Um, but I, I, I would like to see if there's other options. I, I respect the fact that, you know, cost effectiveness, you know, we're trying to be, uh, here. But I, I think there is going to be a lot of resistance to this if it's, you know, in any way, shape or form, a bunch of households, residents getting charged ultimately, um, you know, what the disposal is going up a dollar on their, on their fees. I just, I, I don't know that I can get behind that.
But I under the impression, but we, we don't need to increase it at this point.
No. And we're going out for proposals and, um, that doesn't necess, going out for proposals doesn't mean that fees will increase. In fact, that should introduce competition into the system. So we could very well receive charges that are the same or low where vendors are competing for our service.
I think it's a step in the right direction. And like you said, we can see where it goes. The citizens may really get behind it and be willing to increase fees or whatever. But it, we've, we've got to do it. We've got to take this step.
We have, we have an out in here. I mean, there's, we can, we can bail after a couple of years and, and if it's just not functioning, I mean, it, it, it certainly, it's in our governmental agreement, we can, just like we had with, with, uh, electronics recycling. I mean, we, we chose to, to bail on that at, at some level. And, uh, again, we can, we can do the same if, if it gets to the point where we want to try to do something different. Now, I mean, Elliot, to your point, we have talked about, internally talked about options and certainly running our own standalone program, um, was, was, and bid out or RFP out a, our, a program, Geneva did it a couple, you know, five, six years ago. And, and they found it to go to this. They, they went through that process and they came back to this, working with the county. Um, there's, you know, um, certainly we can add it into our, our, our RFP for, um, our waste services as to, you take care of it. But that, you do something, you, you know, but there, that cost is still going to come back and circle back to all of us as residents. And, and so at some level, it is going to, it is a cost that we'll see.
So we've, we've RFP'd or bid it out, if you will, as, as just doing our own program. We've RFP bid it out as doing it in, in our governmental, given your intergovernmental agreement with the county. Um, and we explored, I know we were talking about with the waste disposal, doing some kind of a joint program with Geneva, St. Charles, the adjacent communities. Have we looked at anything like that? We're doing a little more local.
Right now, we're working with, right now, we're working with St. Charles on our waste services. Um, for all, all three cities, we're, we're going to have, uh, all of our contracts would be identical. Um, we won't be in our, in our governmental agreement to have one contract for this, this go around. Um, but we are working together so that our contract language is identical, um, with the exception of everything, um, with the exception of everything that's really pertinent to just our individual cities, like how we service city buildings and downtowns, you know, everything and, and special events. St. Charles currently doesn't have a, a fee for hazardous waste. Geneva has a fee of three dollars, just like we do. And Geneva's operating in, in the counties, under the county's IGA. Um, again, they, they did have their own program with, uh, I think it was waste management at, at, it was another at your door kind of service. Um, and they've, again, gone to working with the, the county.
Marty?
Yeah, I, I think to your point, what we're talking about is 300 households times 70 pounds. That's not a lot of, of waste. That's two salt bags. It comes out to 21,000 pounds a year that we would be getting rid of, of hazardous waste. There's a lot more of that that's around. And I think what, I agree with you that we know this option is out there, but I don't think that we know or have enough information, is that the most amount that we can get with maybe some other ideas that we have out there? Maybe there might be something that turns it to 75,000, but for $50,000 more. I just don't have that information.
That's kind of what I would like to see.
Exactly. And that's where I'm kind of like, okay, we know that it's this, but in the long run, this is, this is so insufficient to really do anything. This is a, this is a Band-Aid and an amputation scenario where you're just kind of like, well, we're doing something. Well, I don't want to just do something. I want to make sure that we're getting the most bang for the buck to get people to get the hazardous materials out of their house. How do we do that? I don't know. I know we've got this option, but let's see what other options are out there to, to make it more efficient.
And I don't want to put it back again on our staff like we did with electronics recycling because that kind of got.
No.
Point where it became a problem.
Yes.
And not a solution to what originally was the problem because that just kind of explained.
And I'm, I want to, I, my, my hope was to get a program moving in, in our community to where we can start to make a dent. And certainly, you know, by 300 homes a year out of 8,600, isn't a huge dent, but it is something. And we, we'd look to add more to that number. That dollar figure has to come from someplace. And, and to your point too, can it be more equitable, um, to do it in a, in a, in a mass type of arrangement? That's, that's, that's a, that's something we've never gone down and something we're not prepared to go down because we just don't have the know-how to, to handle it. Now, it, it's best left to people that know how to do it. Um, so I, I just, we certainly can, can look into it and, and see the operating budget of, of Naperville and, and, and see what it is to service a 500, what it is to service 1,000 people and kind of get a, a number on what that would cost.
Well, that's, and well, that's for me. To Marty, to your point, with all, with all the, with all the poundage, um, when I take something down to, to Naperville, I've got more than 70 pounds of stuff in my, you know, in the trunk that I'm bringing down there. So to me, I, I look at this, I think it's a, it's a nice service to offer elderly, single people. For me, I'd rather have the convenience of being able to go down on a Saturday morning whenever I want to go down there and, and, and take that down there. I don't want to wait three months to unload all the, you know, all the weed killer and stuff that I've got accumulating in my garage. So I think, again, going back to this, education's going to be big. Letting people know that this is available, what their hours are, all that down at the Naperville site so they can go down there. They're Kane County residents, they can do this. Um, and they can do that any Saturday, any Saturday morning. Um, and then really use this, you know, the, the pickup here, focus on those that can't get there.
That's a good idea.
So, and that's a good point. Focus on those who can't get there. But I, I don't know, just trying to wrap it around, just to sum it up. If we don't raise the fee to the, the service and we leave it at three dollars, it's not going to cost anybody anything. We, we have an RFP out there and, and it might cost people more if the RFPs do come back higher than what the fees are now that people have to pay per sticker. Okay? And that's just the way it is. That's not this program taxing the, the residents further. I think, you know, if we don't do anything, we're being irresponsible. I think we need to do something. And, 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 and I understand Marty's point, it's only 300 households times 70 pounds, but that is something out of the mainstream and it's going where it belongs and then taking it out of our, our, our waste fields. And, and to your point, Scott, is, is, you know, education to tell people, hey, you know, if other avenues available, if you, you have to get it out of your house, you can take it to Naperville. So there's a lot of avenues we can do. But I think as a city, as, as, as elected officials in the city, you know, we have to show responsibility and leadership and say, hey, we need to start cleaning up this stuff and, and we're going to start now. Now, it's not a big way, it's not a big bang, but it's a start. And, and hopefully, you know, we have a contract that if it's not working, we can get out of. And if it, and if it, uh, I believe you said that, that there is an exit strategy if we needed it, an exit ramp. And so, uh, but if it is working well, maybe we can expand upon it in five years. It's just, it's just trying to move forward to get the poisons out of our community.
Right now, it's built kind of to the limit of what their vendor can handle. Right now, it's built kind of to the limit of what their vendor can handle. And I think it's all of us, and their vendor has another, a few years in their contract. So, it, it's, as they go for, because they bid this out themselves and, and, and the county and included Geneva at the time, I think they already included those numbers into their, their RFP for, for bidding that out. Now that they have ours, as far as what we look to contribute to the program, and if we want to, if we do this program and we want to continue with the next vendor, we can look at that option too, to see if we want to ramp up our numbers to accommodate more households and accommodate more stops.
And I'm not saying not to do anything. I'm saying, are there other options where we can do more? Which is a big difference because I don't want to get into a contract to get into a contract because the more responsible thing to do would be to make sure that we've got several options, knowing this is the, this is your lowest hand. Can we get more? And what is that going to cost? And are we willing to put more money into it? I mean, at least give us a fighting opportunity to figure out, can we spend more money to get more of it out that needs to be?
I think he's been exhausted.
To, to agree with you, I would say, yes, there are probably other options out there. But again, this, this, it, it takes staff and it takes time for, for those things to be absorbed. And this is a reasonably hands-off staff project. This is, I have to review the, the locations every month. And we can let the county staff do the billing, do the review of the numbers and to make sure that, that we're, we're, they're, they're paying the right amounts and all that. I think the option that you kind of pointed out is if we were to just have our own collection day or, or, I think that puts a big, big, more, more of a, a larger burden on staff through, may not be able to pull, and that's why we've avoided it for this last few years since this last contract.
Doolan?
My, I think the thing that just keeps coming back to me is there are people in town who are already, I'm going to use my favorite new word, woke to recycling. And so, they're the same people, so like Scott drives down to Naperville, I drive down to Naperville. There are a lot of people probably on the Environmental Commission that drive to Naperville to recycle. Are those going to be the same people who pick up the phone and go, hey, come and pick it up for my front lawn now and I don't have to drive to Naperville anymore? So, are we really, is it, is it those garages that Alan sees that have hazardous chemicals that we're really going to be reaching? Or is it the people who already know that there are programs in existence and go out of their way to search it out? Because, you know, if I dispose of batteries, I bring them to City Hall. The same thing with light bulbs. If I have oil-based paint, I take it to Naperville. I have sharps, I have to take it to the coroner's office. So, i- if you're someone who's already into recycling, you're going to deal with it. So, to make it more convenient for someone who already recycles to have a bag picked up on my front lawn, I mean, to me, that doesn't make any sense fiscally. So, that's why I'm kind of hesitant on this. And again, I love to recycle stuff. It really makes me feel good, but it's not going to get that stuff out of the old garage where somebody doesn't really care.
I think this is a little bit like that last conversation we had on the, on the liquidated damages and would we have gotten a better price from a vendor if the timeframe was different? We don't know.
We don't know.
Okay. We don't know whether or not the same people are going to use it or somebody different
Exactly.
because we are not doing it. But I think with Scott instituting this, and, and you'll get information from them, not only the ones that they are going to pick up, right? Because they're going to verify.
Absolutely. I get a very detailed monthly collection.
Where you also know, you know, how many other ones request that they're getting that you're not able to service. So, you'll know with some time here how successful of a situation this is. Maybe it's not, maybe there's not a desire for it. Maybe nobody's going to use it. Maybe there's going to be 500 houses a year that want to use it. Let's try it. Let's find out.
If we don't use our $35,000 in a year timeframe, do we lose it? Or are we just chipping away at it? That check that we write it in?
Basically, we would write a check for $35,000. It would, it would go into their account. They would then make the, make the monthly payments based on the, the amount of pickups and the category in which the pickups cost.
So, if we don't use it in a, in a year timeframe, we don't lose it, it just continues to keep keeping away?
We won't, we won't lose the, the monies that we have contributed if it doesn't add up to the, I, I would think that that wouldn't happen, but as far as, we would certainly have enough people to, to use the funds.
All right. Drew?
I admit, I think Dave more or less made my point. I, I think we need to do this. This program gives us an opportunity to get into it in a relatively turnkey fashion without a lot of ramp up. It's, it's simple and it's easy to do. And to Dave's point, we're making a lot of speculation about who's going to use it, how often it's going to be used, how many people are going to be used, what the demand's going to be. This gives us a way to get into it for a couple of years and get a gauge on what that really looks like. So that if we do go looking for a more efficient, to see if there's a more efficient program, we've got some actual hard data and numbers to, to go with. And, you know, as an added bonus, putting this program out there, it's, you know, this is a high-value service that we're bringing to the community. And it's not 125 bucks per that, you know, is, is something that residents can take advantage of that isn't costing them any more tomorrow than it did today, which I think is valuable. And it also helps, you know, from Chris and everybody else to bring the issue of actually disposing of this stuff properly to the forefront and giving us an opportunity to talk about it with potential solutions. So, it, to me, it's, I think it makes all the sense in the world to pursue this.
Mark?
I guess I would like to understand what the out clause is and how quick, how quickly we could get out of this agreement. And
Thirty days.
if we were to, you know, six months in, determine that nobody's using it, for whatever reason.
In the, in, in
Not being advertised well or whatever. I mean, how quickly can we get out? Maybe it's two years down the road.
Laura has the, uh.
Thirty days.
Oh, really? Okay.
Section five is the termination clause and that's a, not less than thirty calendar days written notice.
Do we get our money back?
What's that?
Do we get our money back?
An equitable, an equitable adjustment shall provide for payment to the county or service provider for services rendered prior to termination.
Okay.
There you go.
Because I still think we should look at the other options. And I, I guess, I don't know if anybody was suggesting that we do the pickup, that a company comes in and does a collection. It should not be any more
Right.
to staff time if we just
Basically, what I was doing, because at some level administratively, we have to do a contract and, and handle that part of it. And so, it's, this is a, almost hands-off operation, so.
Other than reviewing addresses, that's really all the input you'll have into it. And then you'll get a report back when
Right.
they tell you what they paid for.
Yeah. The, and Jennifer really wanted, wanted us to include anybody who has a Batavia address, which obviously, you know, there's a lot of folks unincorporated that are at Batavia addresses. And, and this is a, a number for, for our budget. And it's, so it's kind of hard for us to justify going outside of our corporate boundaries. So, so that's why, that's why the, the onus will end up falling on me to, to review that address list when that, when that time comes.
I want to make a motion. We recommend city council passage of resolution 18 dash 36 dash R authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Batavia and the county of Kane for household hazardous waste collection services and write it to the off-contract RFP 20 dash 017 with U.S. Ecology.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by ATAC.
But we're leaving the fee at three dollars?
It's stated, it's stated as in, I think in there that it goes to four.
You know what? I would amend that to say, leave it at three dollars.
There's not, not in the, is there?
That's on the
You know, it's in the memo and it refers to the RFP that's going to go out for waste hauling. So, I think maybe we can defer it to the waste hauling RFP.
Okay.
The staff intends to change that, but it was not part of the
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make the change in, in our RFP for when, when we do go out for proposals on that, to keep it at three.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Okay. Item number, so that has to go on the regular agenda.
Just as an aside, interestingly enough, the Naperville facility is only one of four household hazardous waste sites in the entire state of Illinois. One of four for all states. That's shocking.
Yeah, that's why it's busy.
Thank you.
Do we, do we want to direct staff or do we want to find out what a cost would be on singular pickups if we were to contract with, I don't know if this company can do it or if there's another company, or if we need to put out something to ask for a singular one, one or two time a year pickup?
I think we ought to wait a year and see how those
Yeah.
or a year or two.
See how it flows.
Drew's suggestion was good. Gather some data
Yeah.
and then make some decisions.
Right. And I truly think that this is something that, you know, once it's publicized and once people realize that they can do that, especially somebody that's not going to drive to Naperville to clean out their garage, I think that this is going to be something that's going to get used a lot more than we think.
We'll find out.
Yeah, we'll just leave it alone. And in a year's time, if it's, if it's blowing out the walls, we say, hey, let's look into having a large pickup.
Should we add that to the direction to staff that we will proceed with this, but that we want to review it in one year's time?
Well, I, I wouldn't mind coming back after
Six months.
You know, say six months and, and just give
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, just so we don't forget about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, how many people were turning away?
Yeah. That would be a great number to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would.
Yeah.
Thank you. It was all good discussions.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight, resolution 18 dash 35 dash R authorizing the purchase of three police department patrol vehicles for $84,612. Memo from Chief Ull, Alton and Wolf.
All right. We're going to buy some squad cars. Do you want to go ahead and start into this one?
Sure. This request is just part of our ongoing mark fleet replacement programs for three marked vehicles. The vehicles we'll be replacing are actually 2014s. Those won't be cycled completely out of service. They'll be taken and put into our unmarked fleet and our administrative marked services fleet. And then we ultimately replace in three 2011 Crown Victorias. This, this purchase acquisition will close out our complete transition to the Explorer utility all-wheel-drive vehicles for all of our marked fleet vehicles.
Is anybody going to cry when the Crown Victorias are gone?
I don't think so.
They've all become used to driving Explorers?
Yeah. Actually, they, we've had really good reviews on the Explorers. The big snowstorm we had in 2011 really sealed the deal for us. So, we needed a, either a four-wheel drive or an all-wheel-drive vehicle. And this, you know, these have really suited us well. They're not the big eight cylinders, the Tahos that we were originally looking at. They're more fuel-efficient than the Crown Victorias. And honestly, I, I, I hate to even say it, but the maintenance costs have been much lower as well. I'm just doomed myself.
That's okay.
I can wood.
We'll get rid of them before the turbos fail on them.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Marty?
Yeah. And I know that you were on top of the exhaust issue for those in Ford in October. Did all the
We were cycling through maintenance through Ford dealership before the official recall came out and all our vehicles checked out. And I believe that the, the problem was, what they originally thought it was, that aftermarket upfits were drilling holes into the manifolds and the exhaust was getting up inside the vehicles. So, we didn't have any issues.
No. And really good job on being on top of that even before it was kind of out there in a wider
Thank you.
wider known.
Scott? Are these going to be marks as the normal, normal vehicles or will these be the Batmobiles?
No, just, they'll be our standard marked vehicles.
Yeah. And when we say they're the stealth vehicle, let's not put pictures of it out there.
[laughing]
People know what it is. I just wanted everybody to realize too, that there was originally four listed in this year's budget, but pulled back and we're only getting three. So, that's, everybody's feeling the effects.
Well, it's in the budget. We approved the budget. So, this is a pretty simple vote.
Somebody like, care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike Slitter, second by you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And we will talk about it. I think it's something we should make sure everybody knows.
All right. Item number nine, discussion on the Batavia Dam. Laura, looks like you're going to take off with this one?
Sure. Since September of 2016, the staff of the city and staff of the Park District have been working together to discuss plans for the future of the dam. In 2017, each organization budgeted $75,000 apiece and $150,000 in total for an engineering study about dam removal and the future of the Depot Pond. We did not get to engaging a company for that purpose in 2017. In early 2018, the groups met again. And given the fact that the state's financial situation does not seem to offer any opportunities for their support or financial or otherwise to assist us with that project, both the staff of the Park District and the city staff feel that expenditure of this $150,000, which was an estimate of a study to, really, the, the lion's share of that would be costs associated with maintaining the Depot Pond, that perhaps we should instead look at the inspection that was done by WBK Engineering that was prompted by our insurers, asked for an inspection be done to identify both the physical condition of the dam and whether public safety concerns were being met. They came up with a summary of their inspection and the recommendations. That's on page two of the memo that was provided. And so, both staffs feel that it might be better from a financial perspective at this time to make those repairs identified in the inspection and recommendations, rather than to pursue an engineering solution that would address removal and maintenance of the Depot Pond. And I think Mayor made some comments at the end of yesterday's meeting that he concurs that there are very little resources available outside of this very community to assist us with the large-scale project.
So, right now, you're just asking for permission to go out for an RFP for the engineering?
Yes. For repair versus removal.
Which, other than a little bit of staff time to put together that RFP, it's not costing anybody any money at this point?
That's correct.
I, I, unless somebody else wants to jump in.
I'll start if you don't want to.
I'd be happy to.
[laughing]
Go for it. I got real reservation about going down this path. Going down this path, we're kind of acknowledging the fact that we've accepted the fact that the dam is ours, which we've kind of acknowledged that anyway, and that we're going to repair and maintain, maintain that dam, rather than, which could be a very, very expensive proposition for many of years to come. Rather than accepting the inevitable, that that dam is going to deteriorate, is deteriorating, and is going to disappear all on its own, and we just need to be concerned about preserving our pond and our river walk. So, I just, I'm afraid we're going down the wrong trail here. You know, we're, we're going to spend time on something that we're going to ultimately end up saying we don't want to do. Because when you get the RFP from the engine, when you, when you hire, if you hire, I probably won't be here, if you hire an engineer to evaluate or to tell you what it's going to cost to fix this dam, you're going to find out it's going to cost, what, $2 million, $3 million, $4 million?
As opposed to the $8 or $12 million.
For a patch. $2 million, $3 million, $8 million for a patch on a dam that we don't own. That we should, just like I said, accept the fact that we need to preserve our pond, go through the planning process to do that, understand that it's going to cost us $2 or $3 or $4 million, not know where we're going to get the money, but have a plan and go down that road, rather than continually repairing and inspecting and repairing and inspecting the dam that's there.
Right. Spot.
My thought.
Sure. Go ahead.
I just want to point out the difference in the cost between repairing the dam and the ultimate solution. And either one of those, you could proceed with either one of those plans and the third alternative of do nothing. But if the future plan is to maintain the pond, I think an important first step is to identify how you would pay for. the pond, I think an important first step is to identify how you would pay for maintaining the pond. If that is something that costs between eight and twelve million dollars, is that something?
That number is not to maintain the pond or to build the pond. That was a complete redo of the river, including all the concrete and all the new structures in, within the river, which basically puts more concrete back in the river than we take out when we take the dam out, and reconfigures the river, and then separates the pond.
Mm-hmm.
That's what the eight to twelve million dollars was for.
But.
And the state has told us, I mean, just so we don't get too far ahead of this discussion, the state has told us, they will not permit the repair of the dam. They won't give us a permit.
That's right.
To repair the dam. They will allow us to remove it, they will allow us to modify it, but they will not allow us to rebuild it. So rebuilding it or repairing it really isn't an option, because the state has told us they won't permit that.
What is, what is the definition of modifying it?
Take half of it out, break it apart and turn it into whitewater rapids, I mean, there's all kinds of different things you could do with that. You could do what they did down in Yorkville and take half of it out.
We don't have that money.
Right, and we don't have the money to do any of that. So I think Dave is right, we have to, I think where we should focus our time, efforts and money is to what do we do to save the pond, to keep the pond as we know it out there, what everybody put all their efforts in to create the riverwalk around it, we have to figure out how to maintain that. And by maintain that, I mean encase it and turn it into a true pond.
Yep.
So I think that's where, to me, the money and the effort and the time has to be spent on that side of it, and then if the dam breaches during that time, then we figure out how the DNR and Army Corps of Engineers will allow us to go in and remove out what's in there and let it be natural.
You know, no matter what we do, whether, let's say everybody agreed you could repair the dam and the state said you could repair the dam, I'm not quite so sure how you're going to repair the dam. How do you get to it?
A coffer dam would be created, and while the coffer dam is in place, they can do the detailed inspection, inspection of the exposed channel, bottom spillway, and challenge building foundation.
Yeah, I understand that, but how do you get to it?
WBK put in their report how to do it.
If you have to, I didn't see that. If you have to get to the dam with any type of equipment.
Right away.
Concrete, rock, whatever, we're now landlocked. When we repaired the dam before, the riverwalk wasn't out here, all this parking lot and everything wasn't out here, river rain was completely wide open, there was complete access to get back there. So to get back to that dam now and do that kind of work, I don't know how you do it.
So it was included in WBK's inspection report, and they did their inspection in November of two thousand and sixteen, what, how they would plan to approach that.
Would you mind sending that to me?
Sure.
Because I see the only way you get to it is coming from the east side and that's.
And that's where it's thirty-five feet deep.
Right, well, and that's where it's deep and it's all silted in, and we don't own that side of the.
Right.
Property.
Yeah, so kind of to tail off what you guys are saying, I would, yeah, I think we need to save the Depot Pond. That was, when I was out trying to get my signatures, that's what everybody was asking me, what's going to happen in the pond, what's going to happen in the dam? I don't agree with repairing it again, obviously, if the state's not going to let us, it doesn't really matter, but if we're going to also find a way to save the pond, we also need to look at getting behind the dam and getting out, we just talked about hazardous waste, sitting behind that dam is a lot of waste of some sort.
Actually, they, in the study that IDNR did back in two thousand and two.
They didn't have heavy metal?
They did, they did soil testing of all that, and they said there was nothing back there.
So it's fifteen years ago.
The main thing they were concerned with.
The river's been there for hundreds of years.
Well, I get that.
And it's gotten better.
Society is not.
Was sediment released downstream. They were more concerned with the sediment release downstream at different times of years and how it would affect the fishery, because of course, the little, what is it, the green snail darter that only lives in this section of the river here is a protected species.
Okay.
And so they have to be really cautious and careful how they take that out. If it breaches, it's nobody's fault and nobody's problem, but if you take it out, you have to protect everything downstream from it.
And that.
So that's the big problem. It's, you know, you can't just pull the plug on the bathtub and let everything go.
No, I understand.
Well, actually, one of the best things that could happen would be that it would breach and, and the pond would go dry, because there's about eight feet of elevation difference between that side and this side.
Right.
So if the dam goes away, the pond goes dry.
Mm-hmm.
And if that happened, and you let it sit there for a year and dry out.
Clean.
You could then get in to the pond area and dredge the pond area out using that material to push up north to make the berm to encapsulate the pond, and then do all this work, I mean, and that, that creates the access, because now you've got access.
Sure.
There's no pond. So I mean, I put some thought in.
Yeah.
And I guess, Dave, I'm agreeing with you that that isn't, that is an option, but do we need to spend one hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year on that plan if the dam doesn't go away for twenty years? We'll have a twenty-year-old plan to execute, and we're just going to have to spend the money again to determine what is the best engineering solution at the time that it happens.
As Alan said, IDNR said we can't.
Right.
No, no, I'm not saying repair, I'm saying one of the options that we have is to do nothing. We can just leave it.
But we do nothing.
And not spend one hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an engineering study.
Why would we, I mean, as Alan said, we cannot work on the dam, so we're not working on it, and why would we want to work on the dam since we don't own it? Why would we want to pay that money and take it out of our citizenry to pay for that if they don't own it?
I guess because we've had the legal, we asked for a legal conclusion on that and we received it, and it wasn't that we didn't own it, but we can.
But that's still up to debate. I mean, I had a conversation with the mayor just recently, and he said, we don't own the dam. I mean, he, he's been around forever.
Mm-hmm.
No offense, Jeff, but.
So I guess additionally too, obviously, there's a reason we don't build dams anymore. I mean, so we don't want the dam for multiple reasons.
Mm-hmm.
So, but I think, we just talked about it yesterday, it, the river is part of our, is a big part of our downtown, it should be part of the strategic plan, and we should need, it doesn't have to be one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to figure out now, but say, okay, great, it would be nice in a strategic plan, a decade or more down the road, to have a whitewater park, to make it recreation, to do whatever it is that we think would be the best use of our, of the river through our town.
And I'm going to build on that, and I've said this before, and he has, going back to the Altmano thing that you sent out, and you know, first, first page, the river's the crown jewel of our town.
Mm-hmm.
And it is, it absolutely is. So why aren't we, why don't we, as part of our strategy, as far as our vision, have a clearly defined plan from Fabian to Mooseheart of what we want this riverfront to be? And it can be phased, but it needs to be envisioned, it needs to be written down, and it needs to be codified, what we want to do with this, what our vision is, because if we're not saying it and we're not speaking it, people don't know it. And we need to, to come together with, you know, not just here, but with the other entities in this town, whether it's the Park District or whomever, we need to come to an agreement of what we want our river to be. We've heard it time and time again, we've got one of the prettiest stretches of river up and down the Fox Valley, and we've made a decent effort of kind of approaching it, but not even close to what it could be, not even close.
But it shouldn't cost us any money to do that, right? We get the taxing bodies to come and discuss it and, and come to something.
Agreed.
Right? It shouldn't cost us one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that.
No, no, it should not. It, it, we need to sit down and we need to, we need to walk through it, and we need to come out as part of our strategic vision, have this, it, it needs to be a, you know, chapter, section, whatever it might be, pull out graphs, everything you want, but it needs to be in there, it needs to be clearly defined, so we're all on the same page, so everyone knows, when you're out something for signatures, you know, and, hey, what's the plan for the Depot Pond? Eh, well, you know, yeah, we know what the plan is. Here's the plan. This is the vision.
I kind of think you do need to spend some money doing it. I, I look at this kind of like the street, or the streetscape framework plan, where you, you have to have some expertise in preparing this, in order to have a document that really means something. You know, we could say, you know, we want to put a bridge here, or we want to put some riprap there, but if, we know that IDNR is not going to let you tear down the dam, for an example, you know, if you don't know that, you don't know that, you could have all these dreams and all these wishes, but you need to have some expertise to help you do that. Maybe, is that engineering resource, John Green, who started working a little bit along the South Bank there, the, the West Bank? He might be somebody that could, just as a consulting, help put something like that together, to have a vision and to have, maybe not go through all the engineering process of everything, but, you know, show where that earth berm would be if we protect the pond and.
Well, and, and even that, you know, we talked about trying to, you know, if it blows out and then we just have access to everything, I think that was even one of the things, the silt and everything that's behind it and what's in the pond here probably can't be used to build the berm with, because they have to be disposed of.
Mm-hmm.
They will classify it, whatever they classify it as, and if they want it removed, you can't just say, okay, well, we'll take all the concrete from the dam, we'll bury it over here and make the berm to make the pond, that doesn't work in their mind. That's not how they can.
Again, that's where we need the expertise.
Right, and that's where an engineer would know what can.
If you, the way I understand all the laws with the EPA and all the soils now, if you leave the material on your site and reuse it on the site, you can do that, if you haul it off, forget it, we don't have enough money in this world to do that project.
Well, no, they dredged this out once already, and that was the issue with it, is it has to be handled a certain way, and I think it had to be basically used for fertilizer as to what it was used for.
Laws have changed.
So.
That's where we need the expertise.
So I, I don't know, if someone would support me, I would like to direct staff to begin this process of whether it's John Green or whomever, and let's get this thing rolling. I mean, we, we're flapping our gums about it, let's get it done.
Second.
I, I completely support this, absolutely. I, I hope that we don't forget that we committed to doing streetscape. I agree with you, Dave, that this is like the street state process, and I think that the river was kind of forefront in our minds of that process. We haven't finished it yet, and so I think, you know, we could start the process, but we can't forget that we've already committed to doing the streetscape.
We can juggle, we can juggle things. I mean, that's, there's no reason why we can't, we don't have to stop for streetscape and get that completely done before we envision for, for our river.
We can vision, finances plays a part.
Sure, it does, it does, but let's, let's at least get something down, let's get some people together, start talking about this. I mean, we, we have a great start on streetscape, we've got more to do, we've got to finish it.
Right.
But we have, but we can't wait to start talking about this.
I'm not saying wait, I just am saying let's not forget.
No, that's a good point, Lucy, and I think, well, a point well taken, but yet, this may have to jump in the forefront because of the deteriorating dam.
All right.
You know, so that's where, if we don't have a plan.
So we'll be prepared.
You've got to have a plan.
But what are we, direct staff to do exactly?
I, I would also suggest that we consider, and this can be for future discussion, but that framework, that streetscape committee really worked out well. It was, the mayor put the word out, and people jumped in, and he kind of then chose who he thought ought to be on that committee, and it was any, it was business people, it was Alton, it was Park District, it was business people, downtown residents, and, you know, Doris Shire was on that, I don't know if you guys all know Doris.
Yeah.
I ran into her the other night at the women's club, and we had a nice discussion, and she said, she asked again about finishing the streetscape.
Yes.
She said, you know, that was probably one of the most enjoyable times of my life was being on that committee. We worked together, we discussed, we accomplished something, and now look at what we're leaving for the residents of this town for the future.
Mm-hmm.
And she, I mean, she was just, it was, it was a, it was a good thing, wasn't it, Mike?
And there are other stakeholders to consider, because we talked about the riverfront, but there are people whose businesses back up to it.
Absolutely, yeah.
So there are definitely people.
Absolutely.
Who would want to be more involved than just the fourteen of us.
Absolutely.
So, and I would put out there that if we're looking to, as Dave said, you know, spend money, and Scott said, you know, to plan, the elephant in the room is, is the dam itself, okay? And if we're not going to do anything with the dam, and we know someday it's going to fail, I think our real priority in planning should be, what do we do when it fails? How do we react to that? Because that's going to be, require some thought and, and quite a reaction on our, our part, because there's going to be damage, there's going to be, there's silt, and there's going to be all kinds of effluent going down there, so.
This is.
It's something we should really plan for first.
And, well, this is why we need to talk about it, it's conditional logic, we've got to have that stuff in place, if this happens, then this, and we're going to have several different, you know, contingencies, but we have to figure out what those are, and we have to have people involved that know what they're doing, that can give us counsel on that, so we can plan, so it doesn't surprise us.
Because.
We're not reactive.
I, I would also like to have the answer again from the state, is if it fails on its own and the, how many ton, you know, thousands of tons of whatever is behind it ends up in North Aurora, are we on the hook for that because we own the dam? Or if we take it.
We don't own the dam.
If we take it out.
And we don't own the river, and that's.
Then do we have to retain all of it? Do we have to dredge it out and do, go out that way? But if it happens naturally and it just degrades and it falls apart, whose fault is it? How does that handle? You know, I mean, I think there's, to me, there's enough questions on, maybe those few, enough answers we need on those few questions, that if we're going to plan this out, we really need to know what our liability and responsibilities are.
Dave, just for clarification, because of course we're on television, and you were
probably on the council then, when I first moved to Batavia, I remember a referendum, I remember signs all over town about saving the dam.
Right.
At that point, would we have had funding to remove the dam?
Yes.
Yes.
And the residents voted to keep the dam?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear in my mind, because people have been asking, you know, why do we still have the dam?
Yorkville.
And it was because it was voted down.
Correct.
Well, and because there was a lot of misinformation going throughout town at that time.
And Yorkville got that money.
And, yeah.
Yes.
And Yorkville and Batavia were neck and neck, and whoever had their plan ready to go and approved, got the money first.
The information that was going around out there was, right or wrong, was that if the dam was removed, we wouldn't have a river going through our downtown. And the fact is that the amount of water going through our downtown right now is not going to change. Above, the dam will change, below will not.
Right.
And people just thought that we were going to end up with a little creek going through our downtown and.
It's just, a lot of people did not live here then, and so, you know, I just want them to realize that it was not, you know, some half-witted council decision to keep the dam, that the residents actually voted on it.
It went to referendum.
Through referendum.
Yes.
And said, keep the dam.
And one of the.
And so that's why we're, we are in the position we're in today.
One of the things that was a big fear tactic was that the, the river up north here was going to get so narrow, there wouldn't be an island anymore in Geneva at the forest preserve. Well, that's going to go away, I think it's this year now, King County's got it in their plan to wall that off and dredge that out and then get rid of that, and that'll basically just be a peninsula on the west side of the river up there, sticking out into the river. That will probably be, that channel will then get deeper out there on the east side, and that'll change the routing of the river through the bridge, you know, how deep it is on either side of the bridge. What controls our, our depth and our water volume through here is the dam in North Aurora.
And that's a lot of that.
And that affects the pool almost to Clark Island. Everything north of Clark Island, no matter what happens at this dam or that dam, doesn't change this section of the river. What's right behind us here stays the same or changes on its own.
As it would any other.
Right, any other way, no matter what happens at either end of it, from the elevation change from top to bottom.
Yeah. Okay.
Some good old community discussion.
Great.
So where are we at, or what, what are we doing moving forward, just so everybody's clear?
Yeah, because that's where I missed, what are we doing?
I feel like staff has been asked to engage the council of a professional organization who can assist us in having the community discussion to articulate an overall plan for the river from Fabian down to, where did you terminate?
Mooseheart.
Mooseheart.
Within our corporate limits.
That's the direction that I took from it.
With a similar framework to what we do with Streetscape?
Yes.
And I would say the money that we already budgeted and what the Park District has said that they would contribute towards it, I think should be focused within the pond and the dam area of how we handle those two sector, that section of the river, that that's where that money that's already been allocated for, that should be spent. Everybody good with that? Anybody have any other comments?
How are we going to pay with a, how are we going to pay for someone to help us organize this community discussion?
I think that, that, those were the resources.
Oh, those were, okay, so.
Alan was.
And I guess, so I guess I misunderstood what you just said.
The only money that's available right now is the 150 cumulative between the city and the Park District. So if we want to hire someone to help us put together this framework plan from Fabian Parkway down to Mooseheart, that's going to cost money. So I think that, we need to say that that funding would come from this 150,000 at this point.
How did Streetscape work?
I understand what you're saying about just doing this, but how are we going to pay for the rest?
Right.
Did we have a committee that came together before we brought in Altamano? Or how did that?
We brought in Altamano first.
First?
First, and then that became part of the process.
The committee came out of that?
Yes. Then Altamano asked the questions and they ran the discussions.
I think we should model this exactly how Streetscape, I mean, Streetscape has worked well. The committee worked well. I don't understand why we should follow that.
And if we go out for proposals on this and we find out it's $250,000 to do from, you know, border to border, then maybe we have to reconsider how we scope it.
Well, what we're saying is a little different than what the Park District wrote in their thing. And so they might not want to contribute that $75,000. So we have to be prepared to go it alone.
Although the vast majority of the river is Park District.
Right, I was going to say, they have as much if not more ownership of property along the river.
Absolutely.
And we are, I mean, the pond is the big consideration with this.
And we have to look at it together.
Including all of the river at the same time.
So then the question would be, do, as the council, do we want to be involved in the selection of the company that does whatever, you know, like Altamano was the design firm that worked with the city committee to come up with a long-term proposal?
Well, Mike.
How would we select that firm?
Yeah, didn't we, I think with the Altamano or the Streetscape, I think it was two or three of them that got brought in and gave us their.
Right, there was.
Sales pitch.
Sales pitch and request for a proposal.
Would work best.
Yep.
And then we picked one. You know, I think that that's the right way to go about it because I think if we try to do this in a vacuum and ignore the rest of the river, we're not doing any future councils or citizens any favors. So I think we have to kind of look at it that way and then figure out, you know, be prepared that at some point we may have to come back and say, you know what, we need a million dollars this year and we have to put it into the river to do this.
Okay, thank you very much.
9:25. We have a discussion on the strategic plan, we've got discussion on providing support for Empower, and then we've got collective bargaining.
Dave, is there any way we can switch the order between 11 and 10?
We can do whatever everybody would like to do.
As chairman of governmental services, I'm wondering, you know, I hate to do it, but we're at 9:20 again and looking at discussing the strategic plan. I mean, ideally, we have a day to do it, like we talked about, but then the council decided that we wanted to fit it into the meetings. We do not have anything on the agenda for next week.
I would like to see it start at 7:30.
We have Spark branding on the agenda for next week.
We do?
Wasn't on there last night, who did it today?
The agenda comes out at the end of the week.
It wasn't what we read last night, when we were given the what's coming up on all the meetings, it was not on there.
Not on there.
For next week.
How long will that?
We can kick that down the road too, but things are getting very stale between the initial presentation and the follow-up that you ask for.
I don't know, I'm still getting all kinds in.
And it would be nice to bring that project to a conclusion.
Well, how long do you think it will take to discuss branding?
Up to you. It's more a question of how long do you think that it will take to discuss branding?
Well, at least we're meeting next week and that's the only thing on the agenda. And I think it would be better discussing strategic planning after branding next week than at 9:20 tonight or whenever we.
Do we want to say an hour?
I think we're going to get a lot of people coming down about the branding.
I do too. I do too.
If we publicize it.
But I do think that I foresee with the amount of development that we have going on, with the amount of issues that we've been talking about, our regular committee of the whole agendas are going to look like this. This is what they've looked like since the beginning of the year and based upon the different projects that are going on in departments, I don't see that changing.
I think we need to pick a day. And I, and I know this isn't good news for people, but this is of critical importance to our community that we get this done. And we have kicked this thing down a few times now. And it's never going to get done. To your point, we're just going to get busier. We've got lots of stuff rolling down. And so I would, I would recommend we pick a date, not on a Monday or Tuesday, maybe it's a Wednesday, maybe it's a Thursday, I don't know, pick your poison. But we need to pick, we need to carve out two hours that we can sit down and we can get this thing done. Because even, even with this, we get to nibble at it for 20 minutes, 25 minutes at a time and then we lose any momentum.
Well, we don't have a council meeting next Monday night, should we have a meeting next Monday night for the sole purpose of strategic planning discussion?
Amen.
You know, maybe this is a good, maybe we should do that Monday night, but I guess I'm going to throw out there to everyone, maybe we should start looking into going back to the committee meetings. Because then you would have, then you would have time to make that discussion. You can say a government services night, this is what we're discussing. And you don't have it mixed with everything else.
You know, I think that's probably a pretty meaty discussion in and of itself, Mike. Should we put that on?
Yeah, so I'm not saying to have that discussion now.
Yeah.
People just thought thinking about.
Put it on an agenda, right? And then have that discussion.
Having been a part of both of them, I feel like when we have a discussion at committee of the whole, everybody gets to be a part of it. If we go back to the committee structure and half of us are at each meeting, I will guarantee you for the first six months or eight months, most of us are going to be at every one of those meetings. And that's how I started off when I got on the council, is I went to every committee meeting to try to figure out one, what I wanted to be a part of. And, you know, then you're trying to talk to somebody else about what happened at that meeting. I can't imagine that we'd be able to televise all those meetings. So being able to try to find out what's there and get the minutes from them, no offense to anybody taking minutes, that it's not, the turnaround is not going to be quick enough to get everybody up to speed before we have to vote on something at a council meeting. So I think.
Worked in the past, but let's not.
It worked in the past, but let's not.
Right, it's not a discussion.
We're running out of time tonight, but.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a discussion that probably should be.
Right.
Okay, so we're going to have a meeting next Monday night for strategic planning?
I guess one question would be, is everyone going to be here? Is it next week, spring break weekend in Batavia? Is anyone taking off time to be with their family or go on vacation or do any of that stuff? You are. Drew is gone.
Perhaps I should look at maybe a three-week time period, send out a poll to everyone, everybody put their availability and we do our best to have the.
Yeah, and maybe you could check with staff, you know, like Scott and everybody too, what do they have coming? Because maybe, you know, we hate to call it a special meeting and on Tuesday only have two items on the agenda. You know, when are all, you know, like CalAtlantic, when are they coming through and some of these other things?
I know that we have.
We don't want to slow those things down either.
Right.
We're talking about that we have the branding coming back on next Tuesday night. How much time do you think we need to spend on branding to decide, are we okay with it? Do we want to leave it alone? Do we want to change it? Do we want to start over? What do we want to do with it? I mean, I don't know that I see more than an hour's worth of time there for us. I mean, we have to make a decision on it. We've all had it, we've all had time to marinate and whatever else we wanted to do with it. You know, I think at this point, we need to make a decision. And for us to come down here and say we're going to sit around and the 14 of us are going to sit here and beat it up for an hour or two, I don't think it's going to happen. I think we're going to talk about it for a half an hour and I think we're going to be done with it.
I agree with you, we could start the meeting on Tuesday night at 7 o'clock, have branding and then go to strategic planning. Go branding to an hour.
Hour.
Okay, just for kicks and grins, just know this is, this is backwards, the way we're doing this. You don't do branding before you do your strategic planning.
But I agree, I agreed way back when, but we were being asked to address the branding that's in front of us.
I get it.
So I.
I get it.
Either we can put this off, if you want to put branding off, but.
I don't. I think that we should come to a conclusion on it.
So that's what you're saying, we need to make a decision.
Because it's been out there in the public long enough that if we don't make a decision on it, pretty quickly, I think it's going to lose. I think that's, I don't need to say anymore.
So let's start the meeting next Tuesday at 7 o'clock. We'll discuss branding and we'll start working on the strategic plan.
Okay.
And Spark might be happy to come in a half an hour earlier at 7 versus 7:30.
Who?
Spark.
Yeah.
You good with that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so that's what we're going to do. Let's move on. Discussion on authorizing cities to have to provide support for Empower Batavia, Laura or Alderman Atech, whichever, whoever wants it.
I think this was an issue raised by Alderman Stark.
It was. The reason I called Laura and raised this issue is because the first time that it was discussed in a public forum was in the newspaper. And it talked about how representatives of the city council, Alderman Callahan, Alderman Meitzler, were there on behalf of the city council, as well as Chief Yule and Laura Newman. That's how the paper portrayed it, is that you guys were representing the city council. That's not how we do things in city council. If people are representing us on a committee, the mayor appoints people to the committee. That's why I'm on the fire board, that's why Mike is on the chamber board, because the mayor has asked us, or we volunteered, or the council has selected and we vote on it. So because of that, I brought it to Laura's attention that this is something that we've not talked about and agreed upon as a committee that we as the city want to be a part of. As individual citizens, I don't care who goes to what meetings and what they do, but please don't say that you represent the city of Batavia on a committee if you haven't been appointed or because you don't speak for me. Without, without my knowledge, without my input, you don't speak for me as an alderman and the people that I represent. So that's why I brought it to Laura and said, here's the deal, we all need to know what's going on here. And so now two meetings have gone by and we're still as a council, kind of in the dark as to what's going on and why the city's involved at all. And so I talked to Chief Yule today and said, Chief Yule, can you give me some information here about what we're doing? Because in my mind, the police department does a very good job, we have a very safe town, so what, what is the purpose of this? And he said that the first meeting he went to, you know, he got a little bit of information and last night he didn't go, he sent Glenn.
Glenn.
Glenn Ottenreth. And so, again, I'm like, okay, I get it. And then when I read Laura's memo today and saw that it was a very disparate group of action items or reasons for this committee to exist, I was like, okay, why are we involved as a city? Because to me, this is, these are not policy decisions, which is what we are here to do. So that's why I asked for a discussion about this.
And so to me, this discussion currently is a Facebook post reaction to an article. Because nothing about this was as you said. It couldn't be further from the truth.
But no, but that's what was in the newspaper.
Hang on, let me.
No, I know, I'm just telling you what I read, Marty.
Okay, and all of it could have been taken care of by, hey, what's going on with it? Because we're basing it off of a newspaper article rather than talking to the people that were there. It has never been stated, not once, not at all, that anyone was representing city council.
But city resources are showing up there.
Right.
City resources show up to any number of things.
We were invited.
That don't get into the day-to-day micromanagement of what staff does. Staff goes to meetings and meetings and meetings on many different organizations that we don't authorize, approve, know exactly what they're doing. There has been no expenditure of money. There was never, not once, anyone that stated, I am here on behalf of city council. Never once.
But that was the perception.
I don't care what the perception is, you're asking for, it was stated as a fact that we represented ourselves as members of city council. That is the complete furthest from the truth. And the questions about, well, what is this thing about? And I don't know, it's a hodgepodge and this and that. Nobody's just calling and saying, well, what is it? Because if you were there last night, you would have known that the goal of this organization is, as it has always been, and this actually backs up to, it was not discussed in a newspaper first, it was discussed here first, because I brought it up under other and said, anyone that wishes to discuss and learn more should talk to Chris Low about it. That was it. I said, and I know Elliot has, that we are city of Batavia aldermen. We are not diverged from that. When you go to any meeting, you are an alderman as an elected official. There is no, you can't put that to the side. Because if four of you show up to it, you're okay. But number five shows up as a citizen, you're an alderman. And you are always alderman because you have to be mindful of the Open Meetings Act.
Yeah.
And then, when you go to any single organizational meeting for anything, that has to be a consideration.
Right.
But it doesn't mean that this body can say who or who can't go to an organizational meeting about anything, the Orchid Society, this, that, or any other, any other organization that has this, that or another thing. We are not there as representatives of the city. That has been entirely clear from all of the discussions. So to rely solely upon whether or not the perception was this or that without saying, well, wait a minute, what was actually going on? That's a quick phone call and that's not one of these discussions.
And that's why I called Laura. Because she was there.
But now it's an agenda item that we're having an open discussion about before you even got any information from talking to the people who were attending that meeting.
And you said the perception was that we stated as representatives of city council.
No, it was, that was how the, because it was not a Facebook item. I read it in the newspaper that our staff and city council, Alderman Meitzler and Callahan attended this meeting and it may have said, as representatives of the city of Batavia, which to me said that you were there as a, not as a citizen, but as an, on an official capacity.
Mark was saying, no.
But no, it doesn't because we said we were going to this meeting as people. And we went to the meeting as people.
And we were, but it started out, it was.
Here's the author of the article.
Hold on. It was going to be a town hall meeting that everyone is invited to and then it turned into a meeting by invitation.
No, no, no.
No, it was a meeting to plan a town hall meeting rather than just set a date and.
No, it wasn't.
Throw it out there.
It wasn't, it was never a meeting with invitations only.
Yeah.
It was open to anybody and everybody who wanted to proactively discuss any topics that were going on and how to best, how to best channel those discussions into something productive. That was it. That has been meeting number one and meeting number two. And people have been talking about it as to how to formulate it. And city governmental leaders or community leaders that are taking part of this, it was a discussion about how leaders can cultivate more leaders in the community to take over this entity body so that they can utilize us as resources. We are facilitators to get to know other members of this community and for them to take over the action items, any costs, any, anything along those lines. Those were always discussed at those meetings, which were open, that anyone could attend. And it was thrown that way. When I brought it up, I said, hey, I don't know if you were at the meeting.
I was.
Then I would say re-watch the video because it just said, Chris is going to have this conversation.
Yes.
About putting something together. this conversation about putting something together. Anybody's welcome to have input in on it, so on, so forth. That's it. There has been no organization to take over the world or to get the city's resources or to make any...
That's good to know.
Well, except for your house. But, so, I don't know why this turned into anything other than...
And simply what you could probably do then is make sure people at this meeting, no offense, that you're not representing the council, and then it's simply done.
But that was said. That was consistently said.
Our introductions, everybody went around the room both nights. And yes, Chris, sorry, Chris Low is a member of the school board. He is there as a concerned parent. I am a member of city council. I am there as a concerned parent. I have five children in three different schools here in Batavia. That was what I said. I was not here on behalf of city council looking to see what I could propose as an agenda item that we could vote and take action on. I was there to extend my support as a resident, as a concerned parent.
I'd like to throw in here that Susan talked to me about this, and I kind of agreed with Susan, that it sounded like you were there as city council representatives. Sounded like, okay, now hearing this and having this conversation, it sounds a whole lot different. What I would suggest is that if this is a committee that's going to continue, I think it would be important to have somebody from city council on that committee. And, you know, whoever might want to volunteer to be on it as a concerned parent and happens to be on the city council, I think would be good. So you could bring that information back to the city council to share with us what it is that's being done on that, through that organization. And you may be looking for some other additional staff supporting or something like that, that we would have to have knowledge over to say yes on. So I think it's a good thing, but to go through the process the right way.
But that's, but that's, there's no need to create the process in that, because it will never be that. There will never be representatives from organizations that will be assigned to it. It is not to become that.
Okay.
And that has, that has been stated as the goal. The only thing that this was is there was a biography section as to who you are and where you are, but you were not at all, anyone ever stated who they were there as a representative other than, I know the chief, you know, as being the chief. But it was never said that way. So I think a major part of this as being made out of a molehill is, what organizations does everybody else belong to, and do you need permission from city council to be there? Because you're not speaking on their behalf. And it never was said. And a quick phone call to the two of us who were there as to, well, wait a minute, this is the way it was portrayed. Is that true? No, it's not. Here's what actually happened. This could have been resolved, because it's, we're now talking about something that we didn't need to talk about. You go to, you know, we're taking a lot of time.
May I add one thing? Maybe say that I think it came out at this meeting, kind of as a reaction to the Parkland shooting. And that in itself seemed political. Because taking two sides, I mean, we had Duke Wall come that, the other night to talk about it, because he saw the discussion here that night, talking about this organization. So he saw it as a city issue, and he wanted to know what was going on. So that was part of it. It wasn't just, you know, I mean, it was a guns issue, and that...
It was not a guns issue.
But it, that night that it came up, it was as a result of the Parkland shooting.
There was the discussion as to whether or not this was going to happen as far as Chris, it was totally said, Chris is planning this thing, if anybody's interested, so on, so forth. The discussion morphed into other people discussing their political views on certain topics that had nothing to do with the topic of whether or not Chris was going to have a discussion about it.
But at the time, it was in reaction to the Parkland shooting.
Susan, go ahead.
Okay. This is, this is what the reaction came from Marty and Elliot. And there's no reason to be angry about this, because after I read this article, I picked up the phone and called someone who attended the meeting, which was Laura Newman. The article headline says, "Batavia Community Safety is Goal of Local Leaders After Parkland." Then the first paragraph says, "Community leaders in Batavia initially considered holding a town hall meeting in the wake of the school shooting in Florida, but have decided instead to create an organization focused on enhancing safety. A meeting of 16 elected officials, public servants, business leaders, and community activists." And that's where this came from. Because according to the article, you weren't just residents, you were elected officials. And so that's why I said to Laura, if they're elected officials and they're speaking on behalf of the city of Batavia, that's where I have a problem. Let's have this discussion, and that's why it became an agenda item.
That's, but you're reading into something that is, you are, I was there, I am an elected official. But I never was said...
What's inaccurate here?
Other elected officials participating were Second Ward Alderman Marty Callahan, Third Ward Alderman Elliot Meitzler, and Batavia School Board Member Bob Beatty-Barr. It's not inaccurate at all. It's just...
Okay, but where is it, where are we speaking on behalf of the city? Or you?
So, so we understand you guys didn't represent the city, and you're not, you have no intentions of it, so discussional?
Right.
Right. And I think, you know, we're getting away from, I think, what matters here. If they would have said, okay, we'll commit resources, or we'll get the city to do this, or we'll pledge the city will do this, then I think it's a problem if they do that. But if they are there and they're participating in the discussion, they can stand up and say that they're the aldermen, you know, that everybody in town loves, whatever they want to say about themselves. But they're not committing any city resources to it, and they're not using their position to represent all of us.
And that was my question. And that's why I wanted a discussion, so that we all could hear what was the intent. And that's why Laura wrote the memo.
Right, but that's where that call to Laura, I know when she reached out to us and saying, hey, here's, this is where it's coming from, I know Laura said, no, this is, they weren't acting on behalf of the city, so...
Is everyone satisfied that they weren't acting on behalf?
Yeah, let's move on.
Let's, yeah.
Well, thanks, Scott, for running the meeting for us.
I appreciate that.
Hey. No, I think it's sometimes, sometimes people need to step up and say that and move us forward, and so on. Thank you.
All right, FYI, okay, we were talking about the hazardous waste a little bit ago, and what does it cost Naperville? Naperville's share is $150,000. Okay, I got some numbers here for you to think about. Naperville's share is $150,000. They get contributions from partners of Aurora DuPage, Will, and King Counties, who throw in $200,000. And the IEPA throws in $500,000.
For a year, so a million dollars.
Yep, in rough numbers.
Yeah. See, and that's what I was saying, is if it's $100,000 a pickup, that's not really doable for our budget.
Okay, let's move on. Project status?
I have one thing to add from the administrator's report last night. Today, the developers of the Landmeyer property that is behind Sam's Club submitted their proposal, so that is moving forward. And that is a mixture of about 200 units of single-family homes and townhomes.
They're going to build a bridge?
They are going to build a bridge, and it does not say "by others" next to it. There was one proposal that came in that said, "build by others."
Awesome.
I remember that.
Tunnel. No, just another place to brush to collect.
That's good.
Okay. Any other others? Mark?
I'm looking to see if anybody would support me in something, and this is of no disrespect to anybody that has served on council for a long time. Especially as we were voting today, I was thinking, again, about term limits. And I know Chicago is one of the only major cities that doesn't have them. And I'm not sure, I think there's, most of them that have term limits in Illinois are up here in the north side of the state. So was interested in having a discussion or having staff look into getting something that would be on the referendum this fall, maybe looking at three or four as a term limit.
Years or terms?
Terms.
Marty, was that part of the discussion that Kyle had? I don't remember what memo came out. His was about how many aldermen there were.
That was about dwindling the aldermen now.
Reducing the size.
I'll back you on that. And only, only because I know at the state level, I believe in term limits, I think we should, if we're talking the talk, we should walk the walk.
Yeah, I can't sit there and tell my, you know, the federal and state legislators that I wish they would do it if we're not going to do it.
I agree.
Yeah, and I also support it. I am not in favor of term limits, because I think Dave and I have had this discussion where I think every election should be a term limit. But at times, people are not informed and they get complacent to, well, if I don't have to make a choice, I'm not going to make a choice. And I think that you should have the ability to at least have a vote on it. It appears to be, if you read the polls on it, the majority of people in the state support some version of term limits. So I would support at least a resolution for us to put it on at the next available, at the next available election.
I think there, we talked about this a little bit, and there was some discussion, too, if no one else is running, that's one thing, you know? And there's no disrespect to those that have been on this council for a long time at all. I think, you know, one of the things that I've found, too, is that when, if you have a certain time, other people are forced to step up and volunteer.
Yeah, you look at the fact that four people showed up to fill Paul's seat, because they knew about it, that we talked to people about it, and that's usually how people are getting involved. I mean, I got involved because the mayor reached out to me. And that's why, that's why I'm here. Otherwise, I don't know if anybody would have run for the spot, then you would have been all around finding people that would be able to help out in that order.
I definitely, I mean, I support the idea, especially at the federal and the state level, that we need term limits more than, unfortunately, we see. The local level, I agree, gets a little trickier. I know you said four, competing for one. When I got sworn in, I was the only one. And so, I mean, it's hit or miss. And there are sometimes, unfortunately, not, you know, options there. So I do worry a little bit about that, but I think, or at least I hope, that if there is some kind of instituted term limits that can be agreed to, and yes, I would agree that a right approach is not for us here making the vote, but rather put it out there.
Yeah, my understanding is it has to be a referendum.
I think, I think that's the right approach. I think that's the better way to go, and hopefully that does, in fact, encourage people, or maybe not shy them away, at least.
Well, in doing a little more research on it, I think it was, we always hear about home rule so bad, home rule so bad, people don't have a say. Well, here's a home rule thing that we can use to put it for the people to have a right to say something. Now, I know that, going back to, Dave and I have had this discussion, there should be a good mix of new and experienced people and people that have served for a period of time. What that number is, I don't know. 16 years consecutively seems like a fairly decent number that you can usually go with without getting too burnt out. But you don't want...
It's hard to remember past 16 years.
But you should also have people, like I know for myself, I said I was doing two and that's it. Because I think part of it should be turning over, turning over, that you do have a mix of the two. But the ultimate ones that should be deciding that are the residents. And this is kind of the, wait a minute, if people really say they want to do it, okay. But the problem with that is, if people then don't run, I mean, it might, it might light a fire under people that are, you're kind of saying, well, you know what the consequences are if there's term limits and nobody wants to run? Okay.
Okay, so you're going to look into that?
Yes.
Don't follow Calumet Cities.
That's all right. Keeps me out of trouble.
Don't do what Calumet City did. They, they made it so you couldn't even be an alderman and then mayor. Oops. So, don't do that.